Monday, September eighth, twenty twenty-five. Don, can I have a roll call, please?
Mayor Johnson. Alderman Ashauer, absent. Alderman Augustinovich.
Here.
Alderman Berry.
Here.
Alderman Davalos.
Here.
Alderman Kruckenberg.
Here.
Alderman Lockett.
Here.
Alderman Widener.
Here.
Alderman Wilkie is absent. You have a quorum.
Thank you. If you will please stand, if you are able, and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. This is the time we've set aside for citizen comments. Has anyone signed up? Would anyone like to speak that didn't know that they needed to sign up to speak? Okay. Moving on to official and staff comments, beginning with the mayor.
Nothing.
Alderman? Treasurer? State Administrator? Okay, nobody has anything. Oh, there is, um, this Thursday, there will be the nine eleven memorial at the fire department on Batavia Road. What time does it start? Starts at eight AM for all that are willing to attend. Good event. Uh, moving on to the business of the meeting. Uh, consideration of proposed aesthetic enhancement project for a mural installation. This is being presented by Anthony Aguilar. Welcome.
Good evening, council. I want to provide a quick synopsis of the aesthetic enhancement program. The Tourism and Arts Commission, or TAG, was given the responsibility to administer the program of aesthetic enhancement by the city, with the task of identifying potential projects such as streetscaping enhancements, landscaping, botanicals, sculptures, and artwork. The TAG memo from the agenda provides examples of previous aesthetic enhancement projects that can be seen throughout the city. These examples include the proposal that would be shared today, including the proposal that would be shared today, are a reflection of the purpose to preserve and enhance the local identity of Warrenville. One quick, one quick thing to note is that one of the artists is here with us. And with that, I will pass it on to Chair Monica Johns.
Thank you, Anthony. Good evening, everybody. It's nice to be back on behalf of the Tourism and Arts Commission to recommend another exciting project for your consideration through the city's aesthetic enhancement program. I'd like to begin with just a little bit of background on this program for neighbors who are joining us tonight. So since the formation of the aesthetic enhancement program in twenty fifteen, the Tourism and Arts Commission, or TAG, has been honored to research and recommend the purchase of public artwork for installation throughout our community. Currently, the budget for this program becomes available every two years. To date, this program has added four new art installations to the city's collection. An origami squirrel and her acorns in Leon Schmidt Park, a police officer and child on the grounds of the Warrenville Police Department, the winged horse entitled Tribute created by Warrenville's own Jen Cressel in Bob Walters Commons between City Hall and the library, and an elaborate owl entitled Buck, which hangs just inside the upper entrance of our library. With the funds that have been designated for the program this fiscal year, TAG is proposing the commission of a colorful mosaic mural created with custom-made ceramic pieces and hand-cut art glass to be installed on the upper brick wall section of the Trailhead Building facing Butterfield Road. A conceptual sketch was in your packet and on the screen. It shows the artist's design, which illustrates all four seasons on the Illinois Prairie Path through a lively and imaginative interpretation of the actual flora, fauna, and activity seen along the path. Each season, beginning with winter, will be illustrated on one of four equally sized panels, five feet wide by four feet tall. The panels will be installed next to each other on the brick wall, giving the appearance that the mural is one continuous piece with overall dimensions measuring approximately twenty feet wide by four feet tall. The panels will be installed in such a way that they will be removable in case that need ever arises. The artists Lori Polpeter Eskenazi and Linda Kipke, whom we welcome here tonight, or there they are, did extensive research and met with local experts to make sure their portrayal of plants and animals in our area was accurate. Cross-country skiing, hiking, bicycling, and horseback riding are among the activities illustrated along the path in the mural. Warrenville's W logo and our city flower, the black-eyed Susan, are featured in the center between the spring and summer panels, visually connected by ceramic pieces resembling a railroad track, reminding us that the Prairie Path was originally a railway. The finished mural will be in full color and will be ready to be installed on the Trailhead Building next spring. The cost for the concept, creation, assembly, and installation will be sixty thousand dollars, which utilizes the full aesthetic enhancement program budget for fiscal year twenty-six. Capital maintenance superintendent Jamie Clark is in the loop and will be meeting soon with the artists to work through their plan for installation. Finance Director Kevin Dollstrand has reviewed the payment schedule outlined by the artists and has reported to TAG that it needs his approval. This project will not be the first large-scale mosaic project for ceramic artists Lori and Linda. Lori's mosaic designs, known for their intricate patterns and vibrant colors, can be seen in public and corporate art installations in several states and throughout Chicagoland, or in the Chicago area. As stated in your packets, Linda and Lori began collaborating over twenty-five years ago and were part of a group of ceramic artists who found a home in Warrenville, working together in a studio called Clay Space that's set on the river's edge on Second Street. Eventually, the group relocated to their current location in Lisle. Maybe someday we'll have the opportunity to welcome them back to Warrenville. But until then, TAG is excited to propose this mosaic mural for purchase, which will surely be a legacy piece for the artists, and it'll also promise to become a treasured landmark enjoyed by Warrenville's residents and visitors alike. So that said, I thank you for your consideration on behalf of TAG and on art, and artists Lori and Linda, and invite your comments and questions.
Thank you so much. Comments, questions? Alderman Berry.
Thank you. Um, I just want to say, um, what a pleasure it was for me being on the Tourism and Arts Commission to work with the commissioners, plus our two artists, Lori and Linda, while they created this piece, because every time they did something, they came to a meeting and said, "What do you think? You know, do you like this? Do you not like that?" You know? So we did have a little few things to say, but not much, and, um, they really tried to capture, um, what Warrenville is. And you don't really get to see the whole effect of this, you know, um, I wish we could make that bigger, but that red long bar that's coming out from the left-hand side is, those are, those are skis. Someone is cross-country skiing on the path, and then as you move to the right, you see, um, two sneakers. Those are people walking on the path. So that path runs all the way through those four panels. So you get the flavor of all the different seasons that you will encounter while you were on, on the Prairie Path. So, um, and they've tried to pull in all the different flowers and fauna that we have, uh, all the different animals, um, you know, the people that horseback ride, um, the people that bike on the path, that's the, um, the next one over. So it's, it's just been a pleasure for me to work with these people, and I know that, um, the other commissioners feel the same way, that the artists are truly involved in this and, um, are going to be so excited to do this. Thank you.
Yeah, I will say, I wasn't very impressed. I thought it was painted until I read. And then to make it even with ceramic and little pieces and, holy moly. And just so everybody knows, there's acorns, because I know that's a big thing. You know, maybe we can have a contest. How many can you count? How many can you find?
Alderman Davalos.
Thank you. I love it, too. I think it's great. I just love it that it goes from one sort of topic, the same topic all the way through. Do we have to protect it in any way as a mosaic? I know nothing about that kind of thing. Does, is anything extra have to be done to do that?
If you could just step up over here, only because we have to record and people can hear you. Thank you.
So we'll put a sealer on everything. That's like a, an appropriate sealer for stone and ceramic tile and to really seal everything, and the grout and everything will be sealed. You would, it would be best to reapply it every year to two years, but it's really, it's like a spray bottle of water. It's like spraying it on and then kind of wiping off any residual that doesn't soak in immediately, you know? And if it's kept, um, sealed really well, you'll be wiping it mostly off because nothing's going to soak in. But that will just get areas, like if you have, I don't know, some big storm or whatever where it's excessive wind or rain or whatever hitting it, it might need to be resealed again. But it's, I mean, it's pretty, it's going to be pretty, pretty stable as far as like, because we're building, we're doing it to be outside.
Okay, thanks.
And on top of it, that's a perfect space, because even though it's outside, it's, it's covered. So it's, unless you have like torrential rains going sideways, nothing's going to really hit it, you know? And that rain isn't going to hurt tiles, so, okay?
Thanks, that's great. Thank you.
Alderman Widener.
Thank you so much. This is so creative, and it really captures so much about our area and our town and everything without feeling like it's cluttered. It's, but it's got everything in there, and it just, the shapes and the colors and everything like that all, I think, flow together fantastic. It's really a nice representation of what goes on around here in spring, summer, fall, and winter, so. Appreciate your creativity and, uh, I look forward to seeing it out there. Thank you.
There's no other questions or comments. I'd entertain a motion. Alderman Kruckenberg?
I'd like to make a motion to recommend the city council approve the purchase of the mosaic mural and direct staff to work with the city attorney to finalize a contract and accompanying resolution.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay. Motion passes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Item number two on our agenda is consideration of an ordinance to amend the Class F liquor license. Uh, this will be presented by Director Emery. I'm not doing the whole title, sorry.
Community and Economic Development Director.
I will respond to either, so. Thank you for calling on me. Happy to introduce this item. A little context for you, the Class F liquor license was created with the intent of allowing alcoholic beverages at a gallery here in Warrenville. Uh, the license, though, has never been issued to a business because we don't have a gallery that's ever requested it. In an effort to be responsive to new market trends and align with our strategic plan goals of supporting a energetic and healthy economy, changes to this license type to allow beer and wine sales in personal care businesses, which offer a full menu of services, is what's being proposed. Uh, the proposal aligns with what we see in many of our comparable communities, which have businesses today that offer wine, beer, and champagne at places like barber shops or hair salons, nail salons, spas, and, and those sorts of personal care establishments. The license changes, as they've been drafted in the agenda backup materials for your consideration, include very clear restrictions about the type and the amount of alcohol to be served to ensure that it's very much an accessory to the principal operation of the site. The goal is to offer an amenity for paying customers, but not to establish a series of bars across the community. Should the city council approve this request, Community Development is aware of two businesses today that would be seeking to apply. Um, one is Excel Barber in the Sutton Square Center, and the other is Jazza Nails in Cantera. Their applications would be subject to city council increasing the number of licenses from zero to one or two, depending on whether they both apply. As proposed, the ordinance would only establish the requirements. The number of licenses would be established at zero, and any increase would only be presented and requested if we receive an actual application. It would be my pleasure to answer any questions you have.
Thank you very much. Comments, questions? Alderman Widener.
Yeah, thank you. Um, will they need, like, when they have these events, will they apply for each and every event, or will be, be a blanket, uh, permission for them to host these events and have these goings-on anytime they want to?
It really wouldn't be event play, uh, excuse me, event-based. It would be a part of their service package, if you will. So for example, at the barber shops that we're seeing, um, there is an oper, option for a customer to purchase a beer with a haircut or, in some locations, other types of alcohol, depending on what the specialty is. Or while you're having your nails done, you might enjoy a glass of champagne. But not tied to an event, per se. It's just an opportunity or an option on the customer menu.
I see. Um, will they need to apply annually for the ability to be able to, to do this?
Yeah, the, uh, the liquor licenses are all subject to an annual renewal, so they would need to renew the license, uh, subject to inspection and being current with all of their requirements.
And then what about insurance and like dram, dram shop?
All required insurance for a liquor license would be required of them to make sure that they're not over-serving or creating issues on the property.
Do they, would they require them to have insurance upon application that would allow them to like act as a, um, alcohol service, um, person? Like, I thought there was dram shop requirements and things like that, that if you're serving liquor to someone in the public sector, you would need additional, um, insurance in order to cover yourself for any liabilities as a result of, um, serving alcohol.
That is a state-of-Illinois requirement, and they would have to apply for the state and have that in place in order to be issued the license locally.
Okay, and that would be reviewed by the attorney, or who, who reviews the, uh, insurance qualifications?
So when an application's received, Community Development is now administering those applications, and we would forward the portions of the license packet to the appropriate party. So PD does fingerprinting and background checks, the finance department makes sure they're aligned with their requirements. We could have the attorney review the insurance and so on and so forth. But all items would be reviewed before it's sent to the mayor for his review and any council approval that's required.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions or comments? It's funny, because my barber does this, and, uh, it's, it's a growing trend that you're starting to see more and more. But of all the times I've ever gotten my hair cut, and every time it's ever been offered, I never see anybody there drinking it, you know? So, uh, but I think it's a good idea, and I think it's keeping up with the way that the service business and, and things are happening, so. With that, I would entertain a motion. Alderman Berry?
I'd like to make a motion to recommend the city council to pass an ordinance amending Section three dash two dash seven of the city, of the Warrenville City Code regarding Class F liquor license requirements.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay. Motion passes. Uh, number three, consideration of amendments to liquor and massage license requirements. Uh, this is also Community and Economic Development Director, Amy Emery.
Thank you. Uh, through the review of the application and process requirements for liquor as a part of our efforts to move from a paper-based process to our new software-based process, combined with the transfer and change of the administrative, administrative responsibilities from the finance department to the community development department, and our experience with a recent application, staff is requesting the city council direct the attorney to prepare ordinances amending some sections of our massage and liquor license requirements. They are not prepared yet. We're asking your permission to do that. Once they are prepared, they would, if you agree to allowing that, uh, they would be available for your review. The idea behind these changes is to address a series of different things. First, we would address some outdated references, um, and probably more importantly, in some ways, we would clarify processing requirements and expectations for applicants as well as for staff. I can speak to you on behalf of the Community Development Department. We are new, uh, in administering liquor licenses and registrations, and so having very clear codified expectations and requirements in the code makes it much easier for us to be very consistent and clear about how they're being administered moving forward. The backup memo provided some examples of scenarios that the changes would seek to address. For instance, uh, the changes would provide a really clear processing time for rescinding licenses that are revoked, or if a business decides not to renew them, before a new applicant could come in and apply and take that available license. With that, I'm happy to answer any questions, if you have any additional input and thoughts about preparing the, or directing the attorney to prepare the ordinances.
Any questions or comments? Alderman Widener.
Uh, seeing no questions or comments, I'd like to make a motion to direct the city attorney to prepare ordinances amending various sections of the Warrenville City Code pertaining to liquor and massage license requirements.
Second, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay. Motion passes. Number four, shop information update with a presentation from Amy Emery.
Back again. So, um, with lots of moving pieces, uh, to the pop-up shop market and some onsite activity in the last week and a half, it seems like the perfect time to provide an update about what's happening and what's coming as we go forward with the pop-up market. Community Development is very excited to see this project taking shape. It supports the strategic plan goals of having spaces for an engaged and connected community and, and supporting our healthy and energetic economy. It also is realizing the vision that was defined through the Warrenville-by-Design process to create a downtown setting. So many people through that process, stakeholders across the community said, "We're, we're looking for a downtown Warrenville." And this is a great element to create a new energy and vibe and help support, uh, that in the historical old-town area and to complement the activities that the city is doing on the other side of the river to create that destination in full. So with the market, we are looking at a multi-phased, three-part, if you will, approach. We are in the first phase right now. The second phase will begin in November, and Phase Three, which is the first session of the market, its actual opening, would be in twenty twenty-six. Diving into this a little bit further. Technology lost me tonight. Um, with Phase One, we are working to get the site prepared. You've seen the construction equipment, I'm sure, on the site and the cement going into place. We're starting small, uh, not in terms of the cement work being done, but in terms of the market opening. We are building the foundation now and will be locating two shed units on the property very soon here in the next, uh, six to eight weeks. We're using the county grant funds that were awarded to the city to build those sheds, and we're looking to have two soft-launch event activities coming up. The first date would be October twenty-fifth, and on this date, it's an opportunity for the vendors to preview the space. We will have, uh, vendors that are currently applying. Our application cycle is now open to locate on those cement pads in order to share and sell their Warrenville-based merchandise. The Warren Tavern will also be open that weekend. They're going to be offering tours, historical tours of the tavern, and they will be providing refreshments, tea and coffee and hot cocoa to anybody who would like to stop in and learn more about the tavern. And we're looking at more opportunities to coordinate with businesses and others in that area to provide really an afternoon experience coming into the, the shop and the park and that area of Warrenville. On the first of November, our second soft-launch date, this date is being coordinated closely with the Historical Society. They'll be hosting a craft market that weekend. We will still have vendors, uh, in the spaces of the market itself. It will be the official ribbon-cutting event, uh, with the mayor cutting the ribbon, representatives from the county that have provided the grant funds on the scene. And, um, it will also provide an opportunity to reveal the name of the market, which I am sworn to secrecy, no matter how many times you ask. I will not tell you what the name is this evening. With Phase Two, again, this would be beginning in November and through the winter season. We're going to dive in to define those details of the market. How do people apply? What will the hours of the market be when it opens? What dates will it be open? What cost will the vendors need to pay to participate? We'll also be doing things like finishing out the actual shed units. When they locate on site, they will have a, a finished roof, um, they will have, uh, all the sides will be fully sealed. The final French doors will be there with the locking mechanisms. The HVAC unit will be in place. But the sidewalls of the units will not be painted, and the interiors will be unfinished. We'll be working through those projects, working with our community partners. We'll also be, um, working to finalize some sponsorship commitments. We've established connection with many different financial agencies and partners in the, uh, community and within the county, and this will be our opportunity for them to commit to some sponsorships if they are so inclined. And then the third phase is the initial season launch, and again, this would be in the spring of twenty twenty-six, starting small with our two sheds and allowing the market to grow with the vendors and through community support. Uh, the pictures you see here are just some examples of some different ways similar-sized sheds have been finished by different vendors. I believe all of these were taken from the Berwin Market. The square footage of those units is identical to the size of the units that we're looking to cite. Beyond the launch, we will be looking ahead to the physical build-out of the space. Uh, that would include the remaining shed units and other amenities on the property, perhaps including a pavilion for dining or a multipurpose pavilion, um, and looking to really grow with the community, getting the sweat equity, sweat equity donations and other activities happening to make the market become fully physically realized. Looking ahead to community-based programming, uh, this would include events and activities that are hosted by the vendors themselves, but also our community partners. Uh, we have had great excitement and support already from the Warren Tavern and from the Historical Society for the market, and we'll be reaching out to other partners that may seek to have programs and activities on the site, such as the Park District, the library, or others. And what we envision is achieving success through partnership. The city is certainly capable, as you're seeing, to build the market, to put the foundations in place, to bring the electricity to the site, get the units located there. Our staff is very skilled and capable at accepting applications and processing, um, applicants and vendors that want to locate within the space, but we are not the party people, so we will not be planning all the events and activities. Uh, it will really be through those community partnerships that the excitement and activities and drawl happens year after year. Happy to answer any questions you might have at this point about my update.
Thank you. Alderman Davalos?
Thank you. Parking. So are you anticipating parking along Second Street, obviously the current parking? I don't know if you can park on the other side of the street. I can't remember.
There is, uh, parallel parking on the other side of the street. We also have the parking that we've built on Batavia. Until the city, um, property is developed, we will be opening the parking that we've built at OTRS. And depending on other businesses that are participating, we anticipate they will, uh, have opportunities to utilize their parking for different events. We also plan, when it fully launches, to reach out to additional operations. I'll say the Fire Protection District as an example. Uh, they have some excess parking there that may be available during special events or activities, um, that could complement the market.
Okay. My second question was something you said in a previous presentation about working with the Historical Society on, um, some sort of communication ideas, um, for the public. I know you talked about maybe having a QR code somewhere and to explain history, uh, because I know there was some, been some concern that that's a historical site, uh, obviously, and our, has a lot of history there. And, um, I, I really was attracted to that idea, that it might be a learning experience. that it might be a learning experience for kids and adults and, well, all of us.
Definitely something that's on the radar. The Historical Society has expressed interest in that as well. We need some structures there so they could put the QR codes on them for people to click on and see a historical view of what the site looked like and understand what happened in this area and other areas of Warrenville. And just a lot of those. I feel like at different meetings, I say different things about opportunities that are out there. And I think they're all true. They're all on the plate at this point. We're just trying to see who's ready to step up. And as it grows and evolves, I anticipate you'll see more and more involvement from the schools, the park districts, the churches, and other organizations that want to help keep our marketplace going.
Yeah, I just thought that was a very exciting thing, that people could have a lot of fun with it. Anyway, thanks.
Anyone else? When did we open it up for vendors? I know it was recently, right?
Yes, it was, trying to remember, just over a week ago?
Okay. Can you tell us, have you had a good return?
We have already had 16 vendors respond, 13 of which are from Warrenville.
Okay, so I guess, and just to kind of reiterate, we're only going to put in the two sheds this year. But there will be other vendors there in tents outside of those, correct? We're not just going to have two vendors there for the soft launches.
That's correct. So what's been placed out there in terms of the cement is the full market build-out. So what you're seeing now, as you drive by, is the central cement gathering place. And then there are eight pads that are located there. The first two pads will accommodate the sheds. The remaining six pads will be able to accommodate vendors operating from tents or open air, depending on the weather that we have that day, or those two days, I should say, for the soft launch.
Well, are we going to limit it to eight vendors? Or do you think that there is an opportunity to maybe open it up? And I know you can't get everybody in there, right? You just started, but rotation, I guess?
Yes. So not limited to eight overall, because we have two weekends. So we can have different vendors in, preview, one set of vendors maybe the first weekend, another set of vendors in for the second weekend. I can't say if all of the vendors that submitted an application have complete applications at this point. In fairness, I haven't reviewed those, so I do want to put that qualifier out there. In terms of having vendors locate on the site beyond the pads that are identified, that's of some concern, because the pads that are there are all ADA accessible. If we put additional vendors along the sidewalk, per se, those spaces would not be ADA accessible. So we want to make sure we're welcoming everybody to the marketplace and accommodating all of our visitors. So that is a challenge for us.
Great. Great idea. Thank you very much for the update. Any other questions, comments? That was information. Oh, Alderman Crockenberg. Is product going to stay on-site? If so, what are we doing for, like, security?
That's a Phase Two question. But I can tell you that right now, product won't be on-site other than during the soft-launch day. So they will arrive with their product, they will sell their product that day, and they will take any remaining product home. What we have seen in the other markets is, depending on how their season flows, whether they have more than one season a year with different vendors coming in, they do set up the spaces to be a shop and leave the product there. The units themselves, they have electronic door locks for securing the space to make sure it's not something you can just walk in and grab something at any point in time. And in terms of additional security mechanisms, things that we will definitely be looking at over the winter as we define all those details.
Any other questions about Gladys's pop-up market? That's the secret name. Alderman Widener.
I was just wondering when we might see an overall landscape plan and like a review of the site in its entirety when it's completed so that we can get a vision of what it's going to turn into?
So the overall site plan that showed the sidewalk and the pad locations with the specific setbacks and dimensions was a part of the city council item reviewed at the last meeting on the consent agenda as reviewed by the Plan Commission. That didn't include the elevations, and that was because we were still at that point finalizing the vendor for the shed units. We're not anticipating doing a full rendering of the site, because the two units will already be located there. So you'll have a pretty good feel of how the others will fit in. In terms of a landscape plan, that will be a bit dependent on donations and our plans over the winter in terms of additional build-out coming in 2026. For the immediate future, during the soft-launch, we really will just be restoring the grass that was there around the cement pads and areas. We're not looking to do any additional landscaping installations at this time. And part of that's also because we want to coordinate with the Historical Society. They had some specific ideas about plantings of a historical nature that would complement the property and want to take the time to go through an effort to do that.
Thank you. And I also believe that we didn't disturb any of the landscaping or anything that was there. We didn't move trees or bushes or plants of any type, right?
The only thing that was disturbed was the grass surface. The layout of the market was very intentional with the building placement to preserve and protect the existing trees. And the existing landscape feature at the corner around the sign has not been disturbed. It remains intact. So just grass disturbance.
But if we can add more, we'd always want more, right? Always and forever.
I seek partnership opportunities with Warrenville and Bloom and others to help make these things happen.
Absolutely. Thank you. Number five, pop-up shop vendor contract. I believe this is also you, Community and Economic Development Director, Amy Emery.
Thank you. With this item, staff is requesting city council pass a resolution waiving bidding and approving a contract with Countryside Barns for the purchase of the two vendor shed units for the pop-up market. The requested units are customized based on an extensive audit that staff completed over the last six to eight months of markets in the region to provide the necessary amenities and layout and features of the units themselves to support vendor success. Countryside was the only vendor that was able to meet all of the requirements, including providing a metal roof in a color that complements the setting, the historical context and colors, draws on the Warrenville logo colors, and complements the existing roofs in the area, particularly the Warren Tavern and the Historical Blacksmith Shop. The two units are being funded almost entirely by the DuPage County Grant that we received. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. Questions? Comments? Alderman Widener.
Yeah, just curious if they submitted any other architectural designs? These the only submissions of this design?
Just give me a second to take a quick peek look at what you have here. Things moving quickly. The rendering that you have is the most current one. There's no additional from there. And that rendering, just to walk through some of the features on it, what you're seeing in the small photo. The blue roof, the rich blue roof color, is taken directly from the Warrenville logo. And we did some onsite visualization at the recommendation of the tack chair of selecting the color. We also were fortunate to have Jen Cressel, a local artist in town, with us on the site that day as we were talking about possibilities of art installations in the future and had her artistic eye helping us as we were reviewing the colors. The white that you see for the balance of the building, it will not remain white in the long term. But when it's installed, it will look like this. You will continue to have white trim, white around the doors, and white around the two columns that support the canopy area. But the walls themselves would be repainted, again, working with our community partners. ACE has already said that they are very willing to be engaged with the community in either donating or providing at a deep-discount paint for the exterior. And again, it would be drawing from the Warrenville logo in terms of selecting paint colors for the sidewalls and working with volunteers to apply the paint. We've talked about school projects, scouting groups, the vendors themselves and others being involved in that. And there's precedent for that with what we saw in Berwin and in Muskegon, Michigan. In those two locations, the vendors did the painting of the exteriors of the market. The flooring that you see there, the brown surface area of the patio under the roof, that rectangle, that is a Trex-based material, so it will be durable and sturdy and not subject to weathering. And that's the design.
Thank you. Anyone else? Heating and cooling, it's included in there, right?
Yep, there is an HVAC unit that will be installed that can provide air conditioning and heat in the unit of this size.
Awesome. Great. If there's no other questions or comments, I would entertain a motion. Alderman Crockenberg.
I'd like to make a motion to recommend city council pass a resolution waiving bidding and approving a contract with Countryside Barns, Inc. for the purchase and installation of two 12-foot by 16-foot sheds.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay. Motion passes. Moving on to number six, review and file semi-annual economic development report. This is an FYI. Does anyone have any questions or comments? Yes, Community and Economic Development Director, Amy Emery.
Sorry. So I just wanted to mention, staff is really excited about this report. We've provided a fresh look for this report, utilizing the new information that we have available through the software, combined with some software that we have called Canva that we use for a lot of our presentations. The idea behind refreshing the format is so that it's not just available as a part of our community development meetings, but we use it as a tool for promotion of economic development with new individuals looking to open businesses in the community, sharing it with the businesses that are here today so that they can understand what's going on more fully in the community. And because it's a new and refreshed look, we are definitely inviting and hoping to receive any feedback that you might have to help us as we move forward. It's not certainly written in stone, and so if you've got other great ideas, we would be happy to take them. Thank you.
Yeah, it's definitely, I love all the numbers. I love all the updates with what's happening, what's approved, what's pending, what's coming out. And then even with the permit totals and stuff, just tracking from last year to this year, looks like we're down like 15%, which isn't that bad by any means. The value's way down, but that's because we know Northwestern or whatnot. So it's just very nice to see all this input and this data. So thank you guys so much for putting it together. Great job. Anybody else? Moving on to number seven, review and file bimonthly code enforcement activity. This is for information only. Questions, comments? Moving on to number eight, review and file the fiscal year 2026 Community Development Work Plan Update. FYI only. Questions, comments? Good job. Thank you so much. Appreciate it, Amy. We have nothing under miscellaneous, no need for a closed session. We just see one more motion. Alderman Widener.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay. Motion passes. Thank you. Go Bears.